Call meeting towards her. The clerk read the role.
Mayor Johnston. Mayor Johnston. Mayor Pro Tem Wierig.
Here.
Councilmember Blatts.
Here.
Councilmember Francina.
Here.
Councilmember Haney.
Here.
Chair Firestone.
Here.
Vice Chair Murphy.
Here.
Commissioner Gilbert.
Here.
Commissioner Itner.
Here.
Commissioner Jacobson.
Here.
Most President of the County. Adam is missing in action, but he's not coming. Okay. You join me in a pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Agenda review here, our approval. My suggestion is, is we put number three down with number six at the bottom since it has to do with the school district and there are other issues going on, so if we don't get to it, that'll be okay with me. I don't know about the rest of the council. I don't know if the commission is aware of it, but there's a little consternation right now between the two bodies. If there's...
Yeah, and we did discuss that. I think they are, in our minds, very distinct items. It'll be quick to go over item number three, I promise.
It'll be quick.
Quick.
Okay, well, if we get to them.
Okay, very well.
Okay. Capital Improvement Plan.
If I may, we've prepared a presentation. I think that is the list of discussion items.
This is the agenda, but that's fine. Go ahead.
Okay. All right. So, we all have printouts of the presentation. I'll go off the monitor just for the public's sake. So, real quickly, we'd like to give an update on what's been going on at the parks in the past year. The Recreation Department, what our commission is up to, and then we'll get to those discussion items, which I guess made it as the agenda items. The Sarzadi Park Master Plan was recently approved by the council, so we're excited about that, with no change to the existing rec center, so we didn't have an opportunity to change this drawing to reflect that, but it is noted. And we started to identify the features that are in the CIP, in the city's CIP, over the next few years, involved in that. So, the picnic area remodel happened already and was definitely informed by the process of developing the master plan, and now we're moving our attention to multi-sport courts. These would be outdoor courts for basketball and footsall and possibly other hard court sports. And then the ball field renovations, a new playground further down the road, and a water element as part of that. The picnic area remodel I mentioned, looks great. Some pictures of the construction process, very successful. The Sarzadi parking lots were all resurfaced this year. The lower Libby Restrooms got new partitions with men's and women's, something that the commission's been pushing for, for a while, so that was exciting. The skate park got lights, thanks to Skate Ojai, raising the money for that. Been also very popular. And then some program highlights. We had the fourth annual open house in the spring, which was a lot of fun. This summer, in aquatics for the first year, we had two facilities that we were working with. We had swim lessons at Villanova High School in the mornings, and then public swim at Nordoff in the afternoons. That went really well. Our summer camp continues to be very popular, about 50 participants per day. It's about a quarter of the rec department's revenue. And then Parent Night Out, every once a month on a Friday, there's a movie in the evenings at the rec department for kids to go to for three hours and $10. They watch a movie, they get dinner, and parents have a night to themselves. And then a lot of new programs in the past year, both for youth and adults, that I'm listed here. Also, last school year and now this school year, the rec department is running the after-school programs at Topa Topa and Miners Oaks Elementary Schools. I've got about 50 participants per day in that. That's about 12% of the rec department's revenue. And for this slide, I'm going to ask Commissioner Gilbert, who's a student at Nordoff High School, to go over it. She's been very active in getting more programming for junior high and high school students through the commission.
Yes, so I spearhead the Youth Ad Hoc Committee for Parks and Recreation, and our goal is to create events that will help bring youth to the recreation department. Our first was a team ping pong night, which was really successful. We had a lot of great kids come. It was really fun. And recently, we've been working on a life skills workshop called #Adulting, and our first session is actually going to be this weekend for college applications and scholarships, and we're going to be doing interview skills and financial planning. And next year, in the spring, we're going to be doing more home ec stuff, like learning how to cook and clean and how to do laundry, and just how to be away from home, because they don't really teach you that kind of stuff in school, and I think it's really important for kids to know. So, that's the youth committee update.
Don't wash the whites with the dark.
No, more importantly, how to fold.
What was that about, the whites and the dark?
With the wrong pink shirt on.
Anything else, Commissioner Gilbert?
That's pretty much it. We hopefully plan to do another ping pong night soon, because it was really successful, but we're still working that out.
Okay, great. Thanks. Just a reminder, the activity guide, the Fall Activity Guide, is out. This is now being mailed to all residents of the valley. And then also a reminder that the digital version is online, and there's hyperlinks so you can see a program you like and click on the link and you're right at the registration, so that's been streamlined. And then the fees were removed for registering online, so it's free and easy to register. Just participation over the years, you can see there's been, if you look at the blue bars, significant ramping up of participation over the last five years under Mr. Kotzes's leadership. I put the after-school programs in gray. Those are counted a little differently, but you can see there's also a lot more going on because of the after-school registrations. Revenue correspondingly, and costs go up with that participation. And then just a list of committees within our commission that are currently ongoing. So, we just started one to start thinking about the multi-sport courts, courts in Sarzadi Park. We continue to work with the Ojai Valley Bicycle Coalition on their environmental study for the bike park. The Upper Libby Restrooms, we're working with Mr. Grant on that. The Libby Bowl Lawn Seeding, we formed a committee, and we'll mention that in the discussion items, but looking for some, we're working with the council on that to get input from the community on some proposed plans. Valleywide Parks District, which we'll talk about, there's been, we've gotten some interest in that, and so we're doing some research on that. Use of Soul Park, which we'll discuss, and then partnerships with the school district, which we might get to. Okay, so, as I promised, that part was brief, and we get to our discussion items, so this is where the agenda starts, I believe. Okay, so we picked out a handful of topics that we thought would be good to discuss with the council, starting with the CIP. And I took, from the city's CIP, I took the Parks and Recreation specific items and ordered them by what year they're in the budget for and the dollar amounts associated with them. And then I highlighted or bolded the particular items that are priorities in the Parks and Recreation Commission's attention, so those are things that we're discussing a fair amount. So, that's the field lights for Sarzadi Park, which need to be replaced. The bike park, which I mentioned, the, it's listed as the outdoor basketball courts in the CIP, that is the multi-sport courts that I mentioned earlier. A new playground in Sarzadi Park. And then gymnastics equipment, some funding to the gymnastics program for new equipment. And then the community pool is not on the CIP, but that is something that the commission has been interested in, so we put that on the list there. So, again, we are an advisory body to the city council, so it'd be nice to hear from the council if you'd like to, you know, reorient our priorities.
Red are the priorities?
Excuse me?
The red are your priorities?
Sorry, it's the ones in bold. So, the red X's on the left.
Oh, the X's are your priorities, okay.
Yeah.
And the one, not necessarily in red, okay.
Yeah, red is Sarzadi Park.
The colors follow from the top row down.
I got it. It's the X's, okay. And the basis for your cost estimates?
These are the amounts in the city's CIP.
Okay. Do the cost estimates come from your committee?
No.
No.
They come from Public Works?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I don't know if there's anyone on the commission that wants to say anything about CIP?
I know at one point there was talk about the basketball court being a multi-use surface.
Yeah.
That's included?
That's our intent, so like I mentioned, it's, in the CIP, it's listed as outdoor basketball court. What we're looking into is a multi-sport court. We heard interest in footsall, which is a hard court soccer, so we'd like to accommodate that.
It's really an outdoor multipurpose court.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, as a matter of fact, I met with someone yesterday and today that wants to do inline hockey, inline roller skating, hockey, on, obviously on hard surface. We were actually looking at the old tennis court this afternoon as a possible location to, the one that is behind City Hall.
Yeah. Just sitting there.
Just sitting there waiting for a scooter park or a roller skating rink.
Anything on the CIP, or should we move on?
I have one question regarding the, this outdoor multipurpose athletic court. That backs right on to residential, doesn't it? Is it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It does.
Correct, it's in that...
Back corner.
Southeast corner of the park, and that is correct. Our homes to the east and south.
Well, I wouldn't, I wouldn't say right up against the fence. Obviously, we'd have to leave enough area around, because on the outside of the courts, there's going to be a, what's proposed is a dual path, like a DG path and a concrete path, that's also going to go around the perimeter of the park. And actually, the access road will still be there as well. So, no, it's not going to, unlike picnic area two, which is a lot closer to the border of the properties that back up to that picnic area two. It wouldn't be the same for these footsall courts. They're more inset, if you look back. Yeah, if you look at the, back at the master plan up front, it doesn't show them going right up against the property.
Well, my concern is the intensity of the use. It's nice to maximize the use of a public asset. On the other hand, just like the Wild Academy and their center court that's not really centered, but was put in with a lot of money, but nothing in the way of sound barrier for the people who live adjacent to it. And you're looking puzzled, City Manager.
Sure, well, I don't...
You haven't heard this?
Well, just, I know we did add some specific conditions in there to address a couple of the properties, but I don't want to get in the middle of your argument, Mr. Mayor.
It's not an argument, it's just a fact, and that is, that is the criticism, that there were conditions, but the conditions were not either, neither effective and some cases not actually done. So, anyway, that, I'm just saying...
Oh, that's on a, on a...
Ryan was asking for some feedback.
Sure.
That concerns me. The other, other part of it is, it says no lights. Now, does that mean that it's planned to be a daytime facility, or is it that this part of the project doesn't include lights?
Well, at this point, it's, it's not going to be a lit facility. I suppose down the road, it could be considered.
It could be, but it's not, it's not a phase thing.
That's correct.
At this point, it's not being considered.
Nothing in the master plan for lights for that field. There's nothing in the CIP for lights for that field. That's correct.
Okay.
But I imagine maybe some sort of barrier or sound wall could be put up if that was necessary.
I'm not suggesting you can. I'm just saying that that is a conflict between existing development and what we're talking about doing. I didn't know if somebody had already discussed that. I'm new, relatively new, so I'm just putting that on the table as a concern, at least Mike, from what I know.
My concern to, my concern to any wall that partitions the public from using the park, like every one of these houses that's adjacent to the park has a three-foot access gate to the park. Every one of them does.
Yeah.
So, it's kind of like, it's kind of like we're improving their backyard with their taxpayer dollars. I hear your concern, Mayor, about the noise.
Public access, so the, I don't see the, the gates letting people into the park, which we're trying to encourage people to use.
Absolutely.
A little different than intensifying the use and the sound level for people who are living in a residential neighborhood. The park is obviously an amenity, in real estate terms. It makes it for a nice neighborhood and why people would want to live in the area. It's just that most people, when they move in, they sort of expect that it will stay the way it is, and we know nothing stays the way it is, but all our job is to be planning for that and trying to mitigate whatever nuisance we might be creating for the neighbors. Okay, enough on that subject.
Yeah.
Other comments?
I will say, we're just getting started on, you know, thinking about that, so we'll definitely keep that in mind as we're planning. Okay, why don't we move on then? So, the next item is a Valleywide Parks District, so we've heard interest in this concept. Effectively, the city acts as a Valleywide Parks District in some ways. And so, we formed a committee, and we'd like to do some research into what that would mean, what it could look like. We would like council involvement on that committee. I don't know if we want to get volunteers now or later, but we'd definitely like council members to be involved as we do some research and report back to the commission.
Bill?
One obvious approach would simply to be, make sure you invite whoever is assigned as liaison for that calendar quarter to your meetings. That's one easy approach.
Right.
You know, and I have a feeling that councilperson Haney has a particular interest. Maybe not, even if he's not assigned, but I'm just saying you have a built-in invite in terms of a liaison.
Uh-huh. And right now, the liaison is councilmember Francina, so, and I'm sure she'd be interested in how that develops too.
And the other ask would be, just make sure you provide information that's developed by this committee to all the council people and staff in real time.
I have a question. Are you done?
Yes, I'm sorry.
This is on? I never know. I don't know if this is appropriate time to ask, but it seems that the, you have increased children, young people, using the facilities. Is that correct? But yet, the public school says that the enrollment is going down. So, is this because the users include private schools, homeschool, there's a lot of homeschool kids? How do, how does this, the two things work?
I think there's probably a few trends happening simultaneously, but one is that, that there's more than the public school population. I think there's also just more participation among the same children and now adults. There's more programming for adults, so I think that the participation increase is probably reflecting that, just more programming. We're filling up the facilities more.
I think too, the, the Valleywide arrival of the programs, the guide, has helped a lot, so kids that live out of the city can now take part in the programs that might not have known about them before, because everybody in the valley gets one of these guides.
Yeah.
Not just the city, so...
But those are, that's still part of the public school district. That includes, of course, the schools outside the city. No, I think it's wonderful. It's a sign of a vibrant, small town, that this is a thriving center. It's wonderful.
Yeah, yeah, I think we're actually at the point now where we're constrained by space, actually, within the Boyd Center, for how much programming can happen, and we're discussing, thinking about how we could use Soul Park better, how we might be able to use, or partner with the school districts to use some of their space for some of our programming.
Does this committee that you've created require staff support? Or is this all community volunteers, which certainly...
I think not at this, I think not at this time. I think in the beginning, it was going to be research oriented and would just be commissioners.
Okay, the...
And I just want to add on to Commissioner Murphy's comment about marketing. I think that's been the biggest rise in participation is because of the marketing and because we mailed out the activity guides. You'll see from the time we mailed out the activity guides, that, that big increase. So, yeah, the population, the youth population has sort of flatlined here, but because of marketing, that's why we have the increase.
And the after-school program is also a big uptick in it, which is, we weren't able to serve those kids the way that we can now, because we're on the school sites on a day-to-day basis, whereas before, they were programs that were a couple of days a week, that kind of thing, so that definitely, a lot of those kids have participated in other programs, but now they do that maybe on a daily basis, you know, during the week.
Yeah.
Do we still, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Do we still have an in-city, non-city fee, or have we waived that all completely? No.
We still have that. It's a 5% per transaction, not to exceed $10 per transaction. So, yeah, it's, it's there, but it's more fair and balanced, I would say, than the just $10 flat rate we used to charge.
I mean, we've, we've had participants outside the city for years, for years, and that's why we had to come up with a user's fee, and that's why I was just wondering if we're still doing it with the increase.
That's only, yeah, the 5% obviously is for non, out-of-city, non-resident. Although we still get, we still get not appreciation, actually, for that 5% for those living outside of city limits, because the contention is, you know, we have a 93023 address, we're, we're in the school district, but we, yet we still pay the non-resident fee, so we still get concerns for that 5%.
We have a lot of participation at council. I don't know if you do at your meetings, from people who don't live in the city, which is fine, because we have, we are, what we do impacts everybody. On the other hand, what we do, we pay for within four and a half square miles. And admittedly, the way the, the valley has developed, we have resources that some other areas don't have quite as much per capita, but we do not have enough to support the entire valley. And then people outside the city are constantly saying to me, "How come I can't vote?" Same thing you're talking about, like, we're in the same zip code, why are we paying $5 or whatever it is extra? And then when you say, you know, because it seems like we're going about this backwards, but maybe because going about it forwards has not worked, and that is, why are we not one community, and there is a long history and many efforts at doing this? On the other hand, if you get all of the city services without being in the city, why would you want to be in the city? Most people don't, obviously. So, we, that, and you're asking for feedback, again, one councilperson, the way we're going about this. I am for expanding the city boundaries. I was, you know, many years ago, but it has been one of those things where when we're interested, they're not, and when they're interested, we're not, type of thing. But if we don't start with, if this is a municipal service, which it is, because we don't have a taxing district, now that may be where you start, is saying, oh, if we have a Valleywide deal, do we divest ourselves of the recreation function and put it all into like Pleasant Valley down in Camarillo and have something that, I mean, that would make some sense. On the other hand, the council would have to think about, we would then, in effect, be turning over control to some degree of city assets, but at least the tax base would then be expanded to cover this. But right now, because of Prop 13, the existing tax base will not, it'll be a loser for the city, because even though we will get a share of the tax outside the city if we were to incorporate, unless we have a special tax for what is being talked about here, because, you know, the capital investment is one part of it, the ongoing operation, I'm assuming that most of the programs now are kind of fee-for-service, which is, is good and bad. It's good that we have the programs, and it's good that we have a source for the money, but it's not so good for the kids who come from families that can't, can't afford the, and I know that there's some efforts made, and there's scholarships and things that a lot of people in the community try to provide, but it just seems like if we, at a council meeting, you participate in everything, go to the planning commission, you participate in everything, now we're going to expand the recreation thing, you can participate in anything, why would I, other than being able to vote for Paul and me, why would I care about, you know, joining the city? So, you know, my view is, is that's where it should start. But, you know, I guess this is, if nothing else is working, we, we got to try, so I think that getting out there and seeing what the outside world thinks about it, but they need to understand they're going to have to, you know, step up a little with, with the money of the facilities, because we do not have enough, obviously from this, we do not have enough facilities in this city to be serving this larger market area that's being sold, which is the reason why, you know, it's getting very crowded. It's not open space anymore in recreation and in the parks, so...
Soft please.
Yeah.
Do you know how much revenue we're generating on the out-of-city fees?
I would say, generally speaking, about 40% of it comes from non-out-of-city, non-resident. Yeah.
The additional, I mean, the additional $10.
Oh, that, that number, I actually don't know what that number is. That's a, that's a great question.
Could you calculate that, maybe share it with us?
We could calc, we can calculate that and get to that number of what the non-resident fee total is in a year, in a year's time, sure, that's the number you're...
Did I understand you correctly, though, the first response to Paul's question was, is 40% of the, of the participation is from outside the city?
That's right. That's correct.
And there's fees associated with that?
Well, it's, again, it's 5%, per transaction, not to exceed...
Plus the basic, he's saying the basic cost.
Sorry.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Plus a little...
Plus, yeah, yeah.
You're at 62% cost recovery across the board.
Yes.
And the question is, how much above 62%, I believe is what you're asking, how much above 62% are the out-of-city people paying?
Or of that 62%?
It's, it's, those are the total revenue, the 62% is total revenue, including the out-of-city fee.
Above 62% is paid by tax dollars.
Right.
38%.
It's paid by, above 62%.
Oh, sorry, yes, sorry.
It's paid by tax.
Yes.
That was a trick question.
Yeah, yeah. No trick questions, yeah.
I think what we're trying to get at is how much of that, what's paid, is the burden, you know, that that's paid by tax dollars for city residents, and how much extra and above that is, I think what we're trying to get at is contributed by the, by non-city residents.
And I presume...
Sure, we can get that number for you.
Sure.
I assume part of the thinking is that not just that we are trying to serve the world, but by expanding the market or having more people participate, it allows for different programs that everybody, including residents, get to benefit from.
Sure, that might, some programs that might not otherwise happen if it wasn't for those outside of city limits.
Then you get to the, or at least I get to the question, is the surcharge for the outside as opposed to, if we had a city-wide, what would the per capita support be? You don't need to get into that yet, but I'll do it for you at some point.
And the other thing is, you're doing fee-for-service, you don't want to have a cost-based number only. That gets to what's called, by economists, the elastic range, where you're raising prices and reducing revenue, so, you know, you got to take all that into account.
Yes, we tried to when we're setting fees.
And that's part of, as a committee, what we'd like to look at is, kind of, understanding the numbers.
And the mechanisms, because there's more than one way to get at a special district management.
Has this exploratory committee had any meetings with people outside at all?
We just formed it at our meeting last week.
Okay, okay, so, brand new. We're hearing it here first, or second, I guess.
Okay.
Ryan?
Moving on, so, do you want me to skip this one for now, Mayor?
Well, yeah, why don't we, so we...
Can we have a little explanation of what it is before we skip it?
Yeah, yeah, right, okay, good idea.
But we have now, we have some partnerships that were already existing between Parks and Recreation and the school district program.
Just like after-school stuff?
After-school programs, pottery classes, it's to the extent that we can help each other with those things.
Sure, okay, let's talk about that. That's good.
Okay, yeah, so, we have some, like I just mentioned. We would like to brainstorm with staff about additional opportunities. We have heard interest from the school district in partnering with us more, so some of the initial ideas we had were more adult education classes, both increasing... Both increasing what we offer. So, currently we have, for example, a pottery class at the high school, taught by one of the high school teachers.
Been very successful.
Yeah.
Yeah, the school district's interested, that's terrific.
Been a great model. And then also, the school district offers classes for adults, which we could just help promote, for example. The Nordoff Pool, making more use of that, perhaps. We, as I mentioned, we used it this summer for part of our programming. And then more teen programming, like Commissioner Gilbert mentioned. So, there's some of our initial ideas for possibly more partnership we could do with the school district.
Tying this back with, I don't know what we call that, multipurpose outdoor basketball court. I haven't been over there in years, but I used to go over there and play basketball outdoors by the gym. No more?
The touch courts.
They closed them down or took them out or?
They have the courts, they just don't use them that often because they're not regulated and they're not kept, so they're kind of.
They're not what? Right, yeah, that was going to be my next point, that we have some facilities that exist. Maybe that would be a place to be coordinating with the school district to improve that, rather than going into business ourselves. Because that has parking and it doesn't have neighbors around it, and it seemed like you could I don't know where the money's coming from, but if there is money to do this, rather than invest it over at that end of town, that's more central, particularly if we're talking about valley-wide minors' oaks and other places coming in to use it. So, anyway, just a thought.
Yeah, well, we can definitely.
Well, the reality is, they already, they do use it. And their youth program, their youth basketball program uses almost every basketball court in this valley. So, they are, they are using basketball season. I think the, the issue that they have is they're not allowed to use the main high school, Nordoff's main gym. And the junior high has limited sources, limited use because they have their own program.
Okay, but didn't someone just say that the thing was poorly maintained and not regulation or something is the reason it's not being used?
I think the only reason it's not maintained as well is because the Nordoff just doesn't have the money, but if we had money to maintain it, we definitely would. Like, it's not like they're super bad, they're just not like.
Oh, yeah.
They wouldn't be as great as, as if we made these new multi-sport courts.
The location of this multi-sport courts too is right near our gym, which is where we have our basketball program. So, it would be an extension and a programmable area for our programs onsite, so that you would use it in conjunction with some of the stuff we already do and expand our ability to accommodate people at the hours that they need to be there. One of the problems with the basketball program is getting everyone practice space at a reasonable time and a reasonable place that works, and we don't have that. It could, we don't have that. We're doing the best we can. But these courts would greatly expand our capacity to do that on one site, which is so much better from a programming standpoint and being able to be out there and have everybody in the same area.
I, I, I mean, the year I coached there, we used Nordoff High School. Because, because there was no other place to, to actually practice. And waiting for a gym time, you weren't going to get any practice in, so.
And one doesn't preclude the other. I mean, I think it'd be wonderful to make Nordoff better, but it wouldn't, from my perspective, mean we didn't need the outdoor sport courts at Sarzotti. I think both would be very useful.
Okay, my, my point again, being a more of a money guy. If there is money to be spent, to spend it where it is leveraging itself with existing facilities and maybe a better location to start with. Is a reason for the suggestion. Maybe if there's enough money to go around and do it in a lot of places, and there's enough demand for it, I suppose that's great.
And they're two very different facilities.
And just going back to your point about the, where it's located and the noise, we, we actually already have programming going on out there anyway. We have ultimate frisbee on Thursday nights, we have soccer groups come out there, they're in that, we have softball, they are in that same space. I mean, it's not, we, we're not going to be, just to your point, we're not going to be, we're not going to be adding a, a, a significant amount of more noise, kid noise out in that direction or adult noise. There's, there's already noise going on, and it's going to end sooner than, because it's not going to be lit. So, there's going to be less, I mean, it's going to end at six o'clock, seven o'clock, ma-, obviously a little later in the summer hours, but that space already has noise in it, so to speak. And again, this is where all the kids come to a good majority of the kids in our community come to play. They don't go to Nordoff Basketball Courts, they come to Zarzotti Park, and if if, if, if. If the kids are in the, yes, if kids are in the gym playing basketball, some siblings, the other siblings are going to be out maybe on those courts or out in the playground. So, there's multi-activities going on all at the same time at that park. So, it generally tends to be the I, I guess the question is, why aren't kids at Nordoff playing on those basketball courts when they're readily available after school? Because they're just coming to, I mean, I have to say, they're just coming to our park.
But they're not playing on courts at Zarzotti either outdoors, because there aren't any, and the one that there is hasn't been kept up either. It's that little temporary thing.
Yeah, I, I'm not sure if that qual-, that portable basket in that, that blacktop qualifies as a outdoor basketball court.
But shame on us for not even taking care of what we have, you know. I'm just saying, you know, if you make the argument that they're not going to Nordoff, that's be Nordoff, maybe they, nobody wants to go there, but anyway. Does the Parks Department have a, a decibel meter?
We don't.
It's easy to download on your phone.
If, if, if I could, please, I, I'm probably the only person in this room who spent vast majority of his life at that park, from the time I was ten years old till now. Through basketball, through softball heyday, when all those parks were used until ten at night. Through anything that went on over there, there was never an issue with noise, that I'm aware of. And most of my friends grew up on Shady Lane, which is the park, the street adjacent to the park. The way it's set up now, and Safakles mentioned it, a lot of the baseball was played in the upper northwest corner of the park, where that diamond is, I think I'm right, northeast corner, closest to Seoul, closest to Shady Lane.
The T-ball court, the T-ball.
I'm not sure what's played up there now, but that was a huge softball field in the, probably the seventies and early eighties, which went till ten o'clock at night. And I don't think noise is necessarily going to be a big problem. I don't see kids playing on the outdoor courts past seven. Maybe seven-thirty in the evening, because it's non-lit.
It may not be.
Yeah, and I think it's something to explore.
Park, though, where there aren't very many neighbors at night, before I guess somebody must have stepped in, there was multi-use of the tennis courts, not designed for that, and the, the people were having a wonderful time and they were very well behaved, but it was noisy. Yeah, but nobody to disturb, so it was okay, except we told them they couldn't be playing their games on a tennis court.
Yeah, except for the tennis players, they didn't appreciate.
They didn't like it, yeah, right.
Boy, you know, the only I can say about this, they're parks. Parks are noisy. Parks should be cheerful, parks should be used. I don't even know where this discussion is going, although we're talking about noise barriers. Watch, we want these parks busy, we want these parks used. We want children at our facilities, period.
Okay, well, I think we'll get a, a little different perspective from some of our citizens, Randy. We want the parks to be happy and we want them to be used, but there's a difference when you take what is and you start intensifying the use in the perimeters. I'm just bringing it up so that it should be taken into consideration.
So, are we still in partnerships with OUSD? Or are we done with? That was what we were on.
I can move on, if anyone else has anything else on.
Is there a demand for swim lessons, scuba certifications, those kinds of things at the pool?
Yeah, that'd be great. I don't know, but I'm sure there would be.
You mean during, outside of summer?
Yeah, you know, in the summer.
In the summer? The swim lessons are very well attended, we actually, the classes fill.
Swim lessons and public swim, both.
Busy.
Yeah, I think we were pretty much full, right, on the swim lessons.
Some, some of the, some, the younger, the younger groups.
All right, Soul Park. We've also formed a committee. I think we meant to say we're looking for staff involvement on this one, which would be the Rec Department. But looking at how we, as a city, can utilize that park more. It's a great park. County is willing to work with us, so we're trying to.
Mayor Johnson? Comment on that, if it's, you want to comment on this?
You would like?
Yes, I'll comment on this. I just want to mention that I think it is probably the best opportunity to look at this in many years for a couple of reasons. One is that the, there was a new Lesor Lessee, excuse me, at Sewell Golf Course, who is very interested in working with the city on various levels for mutual benefit. And it seems to me that we're at capacity constraints for things like what, women's softball, soccer fields, you name it, with a completely underutilized area. And of course, this county is very interested in offering a liability, which is the other side of it, you know, that they don't want to pay for it anymore. But what I'd like to see is for this committee to work with members of council, I'm certainly willing to be part of that. Where the council endorses at least analyzing and trying to identify what unmet needs could be met, and what kind of fee-for-service potential would there be? Between the fields that could be established, the horse arena that's hardly ever used, the large group picnic area. So, I, I'm hoping that the council agrees that we should at least try to have a focus for this committee be a needs assessment and a, and a revenue potential.
A point of clarification, the new Lessee is only on the golf course, they have nothing to do with the general park.
No, but they're interested in working with the city to mutual benefit in terms of both sides of San Antonio Creek. They're, they, I've actually, they're, they're interested in, in speculating and talking about possible. So, I, I'm just saying, that's what I hope happens, is that the council goes, hey, you know, let's, let's, that's what I would like to see this group do, is to have that focus personally.
The feedback, the most recent feedback we've gotten through our commission from the county is that they're not interested in getting rid of the property or, you know, or.
I'm not talking about selling it.
Right, or, or even giving it to the city or any relationship.
I'm not talking about giving it.
Perfect, good, I just want to be clear.
Long-term lease.
I just wanted to be clear, because the, the most recent information we've had from the county is they're interested in partnerships and different ways.
And long-term, possible long-term lease, correctly. So, I just think it's time to get some numbers down. What unmet needs could we meet? What kind of fee-for-service revenue could be legitimately considered? Start looking at the numbers.
Yeah, and that's the intent of the committee. Thanks.
It sounds like you might be interested in being involved.
I am.
Okay.
Awesome.
Well, we met, we met, what was it, Steve, five, six years ago? With the assistant director for the county general services, and he was very interested at that time, so.
There was a more recent meeting too, I think, where he was more interested.
From the city manager's perspective, I would just be very interested in seeing what the numbers come back at. Not to be the wet blanket here, but typically, as you see with our own programs, there's a subsidy that usually comes from the General Fund for Recreation program. So, as I said, I'd be, would like to see the numbers. And for me, that really is the, is the big mover and shaker there. So, that's my comment, thank you.
Because that's going outside the city again, and taking on a liability that the county currently has. And this sort of thing is not profit-making, as we know, just within the, even with the ten percent help of the people who are enrolling, so we're we are into that, that dilemma of expanding and then, you know, then deciding we need more facilities to market more expansion, and the population within the city is not growing, so.
And that's all I'm saying, is I think, I'd like to analyze it and see how the numbers look like.
To see what might be done as a partnership.
I'd like to be part of that, and kind of the thing I do, you know, economics training and stuff, so. I'm just volunteering my effort on that.
Thank you, all right, we'll rope you in. Getting through this pretty quickly, it's great. Okay, so we spent a fair amount of time at our commission meetings in the past year discussing the Rec Department CPR and first aid policy. It had come to our attention that there were some concerns about some of the, the programming. There not being someone that was CPR, first aid certified there or required to be there. So, we spent some time researching what's currently going on in the department, understanding, kind of, are there gaps? Are there times or places where there is Rec Department programming and the staff or contractors aren't CPR or first aid certified? And what we found out was, for the most part, at the Boyd Center at Sarzotti Park, there's, when there's programming, there are people, there are staff, for the most part, that are CPR and first aid certified. But that there were some of the off-site programs where the contractors were not CPR or first aid certified. And that was a concern to us, so we discussed it. As you can see by our, our vote there, we were pretty split on how to address it, but we did want to bring this to the, the council's attention. What we landed on was to recommend that the full and part-time employees be strongly encouraged to obtain CPR and first aid training, which is roughly the status quo now, but that the off-site contractors be required to obtain it, and that that be paid for by the city. So, I know, I know there's some legal ramifications to requirements, which we didn't really have the opportunity to get too deep into, but I'm sure that.
But don't we have city staff on duty when these people are there, or is it all contractors on their own?
Those, some of the contracted classes, off-site, tennis, horsemanship.
Oh, I see.
The pottery class, anything away from the park. Some of those instructors aren't, aren't CPR, first aid certified.
Okay, well, I will use this as an opportunity to say something I've said a couple of times before. The fire extinguishers over there, I don't know when they were serviced last. The defibrillator would, does not work in the last, unless this has been taken care of, if it has, truly.
It has been, about, little more than a month ago.
The emergency lights, are they, the battery operated again, where the lights come on?
Yes, they're, well, they'll come on when the power goes out, yes, battery operated, yeah.
And, okay, and then I would encourage us to put money, or to authorize money to be spent to get a decibel meter for the parks. That way, we can give data to Randy as to how much we're enjoying the place.
I agree with that recommendation, Mr. Mayor, and we're looking into getting one.
Again, I'm not even going to touch that. Waste your money, but more importantly is, is someone trained to use the defibrillator. Great to have one, who's certified to use it?
Well, I would hate to be the certified guy that got a defibrillator that didn't work, so you start first with the equipment, and then we, that the reason I bring this up is we're talking about training and instruction, and that comes after we take care of the maintenance, so.
Well, the, the defibrillator is functioning, it's functional. I, I don't know, maybe some of the gym staff don't know the operation of it, so.
Well, I checked it. I haven't checked in the last month, so I know, so I'm glad to hear that it's been fixed.
Well, it, it may look like it's not functioning, but we, we intentionally keep the battery just slightly out of it, so it doesn't waste the battery. If, if, if you push the battery in.
Is there a set of instructions for that?
Yes.
In case a fire break last?
Yeah, it, it, it's very self-explanatory, actually. It's similar to the use of the defibrillator. It, it, all the instructions are right there. I mean, certainly, you should have training in how to use it, but it is
They're like a fire extinguisher, they're set on a wall, different places, and you grab it, and a citizen can grab it and use it to help other citizens.
Exactly. It is the same thing for the defibrillator. It is functioning.
Okay, well, I would, I would suggest that we maybe give you a little more money for batteries if.
No, it's not, it, it, it is just, well, for sake of the, the rest of the group here, it is right, it, it's right, just slightly pulled out of the area where you would put the battery. All you do is push, it's right there, you just push it in.
There's one other thing with this too, and, and again, I would say, my suggestion would be contact Nordoff High School. All the coaches are certified in CPR every two years. Anyone associated with athletic, with athletics at that school is certified. We can get with their program, and we can get anyone certified on a two-year basis. It's real quick, real easy, they already do it.
Right, we actually do it too, through the Rec Department.
Yeah, our JPIA will offer it from time to time to CPR and first aid training.
My, Mr. Mayor, my question is more important, I mean, first of all, you may have wonderful directions in the defibrillator, but who's going to, has the time to read the directions to figure out how it works? So, if you're trained to know how it works, it's great. But I think even more important is when you're going to use it. is when you're going to use it.
I mean, you just don't pull those paddles out and start zapping people.
Well, I'd be happy to answer that.
Because the batteries are not...
You probably could do a hell of a lot more harm than good.
Actually, you can't, you cannot hurt somebody with those, they are absolutely foolproof. If you go through the training, you would be very enlightened, it, it walks you through the process.
And the batteries aren't even...
It walks you through the process on how to set the leads and everything, you, you can't really do damage to somebody. They are set up for a member of the public to use in an emergency.
But when? That's the question.
Whenever they're needed.
Honestly, they're almost, they're almost as simple to use as a fire extinguisher. They're, they're, they're...
Well, I understand, but you use a fire extinguisher...
Next time, for the next joint meeting, we will bring the defibrillator in, and we'll...
Use a fire extinguisher when there's a fire.
Demo.
And only on certain types of fires, but you use a defibrillator when somebody's heart has stopped.
Correct, and unless you...
You know that the heart has stopped before you start using it.
The machine tells you how to do that. If you do not get the lead set up correctly, it will not allow you to put juice into the individual. It reads the patient's heartbeat and will not allow you to cause harm to them.
Now you've got two different observations, one from the lawyer who's concerned about the liability, and one from me who hopes if I have to grab one, it actually works, so, okay.
Just remember to push in the battery.
I have a half minute of a question before we run out of time. Are we still doing potential use of chaperone? We're not doing that, right?
We, we have a backup slide on that.
Okay.
I can show you, but...
It's informational.
Yeah.
Information in the packets.
Well, to me, the most important part of the topic we're closing now is the requirement for off-site contractors. So you're going to be, the off-site contractor requirement seems to be the most important aspect of this discussion.
Yes, it, it is really...
Is that going to, is that a staff, a recommendation to staff, or does that require council action?
Well, it's two things, I guess for, for staff, I guess two questions are, the recommendation is to, for, to pay for staff training, for employees.
It's really a budget question, it can be handled administratively.
So it'll come back to us, all right?
Yeah, it's a policy question as well.
Yeah.
Does the Joint Powers Authority, is this something that they're saying that off-site contractors have to have this? Is that why we got into this?
It's not a recommendation, and it's certainly not a requirement, I don't even know that it's a recommendation from the JPIA.
It's not a requirement, I, my guess would be that they would probably recommend, I mean, best practices, everyone have, everyone have CPR and First Aid training, I don't see why they wouldn't find that as best practice, and they do find that as best practice, but how, how we get there and how we pay for it is the question.